Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. I'd like to ask before we begin the meeting that we stand, observe a moment of silence, and that will be followed by a pledge of allegiance. Join me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can we have a roll call, please?
Brad Hens.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
Here.
Sean Brewster.
Here.
Wayne Barahona.
Here.
Ed Hamel.
Here.
All right. You have before the agenda. I would like to add one item to that under the consent agenda, item 3E, a request that came in from St. Pat's just today regarding a block party they're having on September 14th. They would like permission to close the alley between the church and the school on Saturday, September 14th, from 5:30 to 8:30 for a block party. So with your approval, I would like to add that in there as part of the consent agenda. Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
All right. At this point, we have time for public comments pertaining to nothing that's listed on the agenda. If it has to do with franchise fees or anything like that, we'll cover that later. If it's something else, you may state those now. And please state your name for the record.
Marv Van Rysen from Sheldon, Iowa. Today, I want to start off, follow up from the last meeting, I made some statements about the, I might say, indigenous people in town, and a couple you felt was kind of funny. I called you on it. And I was pressed for some percentages. Why didn't have the percentages? Well, I have some statistics for you tonight. Either accurate, as far as I know. And one, you have to find out that the summer lunch program feeds 75 every day and up to Free and reduced lunches at Sheldon School is 46 percent. St. Pat's, although I could not get the percentages because they want to keep that if quite evident, but anyhow, it's even higher than our state. 11.2 percent of the population of Sheldon, more than below the poverty level. When you look at that, that's one out of every 10 people in this town. And that's not counting all the fixed income and so people. That could be considerably more people than that. Upper Des Moines Food Bank recently, I know from being in church, they're almost out of food and other items. They sent out a plea to churches to please help fill that food. It's almost empty. The backpack program in the school system is huge. At the end of the year, no, it was even bigger yet because they filled big boxes to send home with kids if they had enough food, their families had enough food to eat, and hopefully they carry them somewhat through the summer. Two ladies groups in churches collect money to pay co-pays. The people can't afford their co-pays, in some cases, a buck and a quarter down half. Thank goodness for Village Treasure Chest. You've ever gone in there? If you haven't, you should. You can buy some pretty reasonable clothes, sometimes a buck or 50 cents. Lord only knows what somebody would have anything to wear if they didn't have that Last but not least, a good number of people I know hang around with, they do their share of, we might say, local mission work, too, and help out where they can, where they find out about it. And these are all fairs that I have. I don't have 100 percent, but I did feel quite offended, not only by me, I know other people were offended by the gestures that the council made. It was laughing. I didn't feel, it wasn't a laughing matter, it still isn't. And I feel this has to stop now. You're here to serve the people, not yourself or Sam there, or Micah, or anybody else. You're here to serve the general public. And I hope we can continue down that path. Thank you.
I'd just clarify that, Marv. Any other comments? All right. Sam, would you introduce our next guest, please?
Thank you, Mary. I'd like to introduce Scott Stevenson from DA Davidson, and he's served the city of Sheldon for a long time, along with many other cities in Iowa. I worked with him in my prior community as well. He was passing through and offered to give us an update on the city's debt and our bonding and the callability of bonds. Just a general overview, it's been a few years since he's been in front of the council, and so he's going to just take a few moments and give us an update.
Yeah, thank you, Sam. So again, Scott Stevenson with DA Davidson and Company. It's been about a year and a half. I was up here to finish up the wastewater treatment plant financing last spring, and since that time, the city has enjoyed the ability to call in some of their existing debt with some cash on hand from the TIF funds, and that has kind of freed up a little bit of the city's debt position. So state law requires a maximum of 5 percent of your actual valuation to be issued for outstanding at any given time in terms of general obligation debt. The table I handed out that I think everyone's got, hopefully in front of them, is very small print, so I'll apologize in advance for that. But the way this works is it just kind of lays out what your valuation is on the left, which calculates out your legal debt limit, and if you track that across to the right, you see the existing debt against that. Moving all the way over then to the right, you can see in the shaded gray column, the available legal capacity. So that's the difference between what your statutory debt limit is and the amount of debt you have outstanding in any given year. So it's relevant to, I guess, just from an update standpoint, the city paid off about 2.265 million in existing debt from the 2013 series back in June. That provided substantial relief in terms of what your debt profile looks like. So from a timing standpoint, it's relevant to look at, you know, the 5.5 million available legal debt capacity you have in the current fiscal year, but really more what I'm trying to accomplish here is provide some forward guidance as you evaluate your capital needs going into your TIF certification timing, which is December 1st deadline, and then budget cycle kind of begins over the winter. Given all that, wanted to provide an outline of where the city's at now and as well kind of what a forward view might look like, so you can evaluate what sort of projects you want to contemplate through your budgetary cycle and capital improvement planning. Looks like you're at about 65 percent of your legal debt limit, which is a very comfortable position. As you can see, historically, that's ranged anywhere from 55 to 95 percent. So you've got some latitude to do some things if you wanted to, but really just wanted to update you on where things stand. Interest rates, as probably some of you know, if you flipped on the TV in the last month, took a big nosedive after the Fed cut rates in July, so bear that in mind as well, I guess, as you're evaluating alternatives going into your budgetary planning cycle.
All right. Yes.
Could you address the ability to refinance?
Yeah, sure. So, great question, I guess, in light of my comment about rates dropping. The event center debt is probably the next thing you've really got up for, ability to refinance, and that's not callable until 2023. So you've got a few years here where you don't have, you know, the optionality to call in existing debt on what you have outstanding. So the city's been pretty judicious about paying down debt early when you've given, had the opportunity to do so, but given that, you don't have a lot of debt outstanding right now that has that luxury of being able to call in and reduce your interest rates. Be a few years before that occurs again. Any other questions you guys have for me, whether it's about cash flow or debt limit concerns or just other debt-related topics?
Some of the other communities, Scott, that you work with, where do they range in terms of, we're at 65 percent of our debt capacity. Is that, consider that about average? How do you, how does that play with some of the other communities?
Sure. You know, I think you get a wide range, you know, if you looked at some of the really fast-growing communities around the Des Moines metro area, get up in the 90-plus percentiles regularly as they've got large infrastructure needs related to growth and expansion. I think that's maybe something you guys have seen here in Sheldon as well, just Sheldon Crossing and some of those developmental objectives you've tried to manage have caused you to have a spike up in your debt capacity. And I think, you know, where I've seen instances where your debt capacity's gotten a little bit tight elsewhere, you know, not just in Sheldon, is where you're trying to address growth, and that's a good thing. So I think the range that you have operated in is very normal for the type of community that you are. So I think it's not really fair to just say, you know, let's compare Sheldon to some map dot that's really not doing anything or going anywhere. Maybe you've got a little higher debt load than what they would experience, but you've also got a very different growth result.
In terms of our bond rating, I mean, we've always done pretty well with that in the past. How does this play into that scenario?
It matters, but it's not extensive. So I think, you know, rating agencies like to see you issuing debt on a regular basis, which the city's done, but you've also managed your debt burden very well. So you're amortizing your debt fairly rapidly, you're making payments on time, if not in advance. It does play a part, but the rest of the city's finances have probably every bit or more of an impact on what your credit rating is going to look like. City's had an A-plus rating, which is very strong. I guess, you know, again, you've got to evaluate an A-plus rating against a town of 51 or 200, which is what Sheldon is, and a valuation base of about 300 million, which is what Sheldon is. So if you compare that to your peers that are similar, it's about as good as you really can shoot for.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
Thanks, folks. Sam knows where to find me. If you've got other questions, reach out to him, and I'm sure we can circle back.
All right. Thank you for being with us this afternoon. All right. Moving forward then, under all business, I'd like to open the public hearing.
Consent agenda, please.
Okay, yes, we need to approve the consent agenda. We've approved the request, now we need to approve the consent agenda. Moved to approve.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Now, moving on to all business, let's open the public hearing discussing the Mid-American Gas franchise. Are there any comments? Can we get him a mic? Just stay where you're at, Fred. We can get you a mic. Okay.
I was kind of disappointed last time when the franchise fees were removed from the resolution, but moving on, I fully support the franchise as it is now, or as you guys have it written up. I've heard the question about what are they going to give us in return for signing a franchise? To me, I think the question ought to be, what have we been missing for the last 30 years without this franchise? I think we've probably been, could have had most of our electrical utilities underground by now. We could have had, probably missed some significant grants or contributions, and it only makes sense that Mid-America would work with companies or cities that have franchise with them and not work with a company that has not got anything invested with them. A good example, I think, that's going on right here in our community right now is Premier. They're putting their things underground, all with because they are willing to invest in Sheldon because we have franchise with them. Thank you.
Any other comments regarding the Mid-American Gas franchise?
Marv Van Rysen, I still object to the giving a franchise to Mid-American. Number one, when you look back years and just years ago, they told us they were going to put stuff underground, all the stuff underground, and 10 years it never happened, it's still above ground. We've operated this many years without a franchise. We can operate well now, trust me. Why would you close the door? And look what else is in that. There's more than just that in the, I don't have it with me. Micah, you went over it, I'm sure. The franchise in itself, it talks about this, I won't, we'll jumble, forget it, right, about the court business, if there's any suit, then you've got to waive a jury trial and all this business. I don't know, I would assume if there's a court action, you can't have a jury trial. I'm thinking, why would you give up a jury, you know, if you want a jury? Would you recommend that to any of your clients, Micah? Blanket? No, would you?
If the council has a question for me, I'll respond.
Well, there you go. See? There you go. But we do not need a franchise here. Why do they want a franchise in such a big way? Did they contact the city? Did the city contact them? I couldn't tell you this date, if they contacted the city or if we contacted, or know which way it went. There has to be something going on, which most people feel, and I think you're probably right. What would happen is that building have anything to do with it down there they want to tear down? They say it isn't tied to it, but it certainly appears that way. If they don't get it tonight, are they still going to take that building over and tear it down? Are they?
So what's your recommendation, Marv, that we turn it down?
That doesn't, no.
No, the building.
Is that, are you telling me that that is included in the deal?
Absolutely not. I'm asking you for your recommendation.
We're not worried about, we're worried about the franchise here tonight.
Okay.
Okay? So you just admitted right there, Pete, that that has something.
No, I didn't admit it. I asked for your opinion.
If it has to be tore down later, worry about that another time, just like you're worried about every other building that has to be tore down.
Okay.
But the fact of the matter is, is that we do not need a franchise. I don't trust it one bit. What are we getting for? Nothing. We're not getting nothing. They have everything to gain.
Thank you, Marv. Any other comments?
My name is Carolyn Marshall, and I own a business here in town, and I just think that it's important. I started coming to these meetings because I think it's really good for business owners, citizens, and those kind of things to know what's going on. But as I watch these meetings and everything, I just would like to remind the board that you guys represent the citizens of Sheldon, and 90 percent of communication, if not more, some statistics say 93 percent, is nonverbal body language. So I would just like to address the board in saying that I sit back and I watch things and just be sure that you know that your nonverbal body language, your stance, your position, your head shakes, your nods, your grimacing, your faces, anything like that, directly tell us, the people of Sheldon, how you feel about the concerns that we bring to you or do not bring to you. And I just want you to appreciate the fact that if somebody takes the time to come here and has a concern or something that's upsetting them or wants to give their opinion on something, that I think that it should be respected, and I think that it would be nice for us not to have to look at body language or negativity or something if you feel a certain way for somebody and still welcome them to be able to bring their concerns to you and hope that they will get addressed and that you guys will work on behalf of the citizens and understand and appreciate their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any other comments? Mark, please step forward.
Mark Renders, Mid-American Energy Company. I have a couple of things I want to, I wrote down, and I want to talk about, but just to comment on Marv's statements, just go back on history. We've approached the city of Sheldon over the last 10 years, on and off, about renewing the franchise, just like we've been doing for the last eight months this particular time. We started talking with Scott when he was the city manager. I talked to Sean when he was the city manager, and now I've talked to Sam. Just something we've always wanted to formalize, just like we have, again, with every other community in Iowa that we serve. So it's not like there was any kind of a secret handshake deal that came and brought us to this. We've just been doing it for this, for that long. Regarding the Thermacell building, I'm hoping the council approves the franchise tonight and it moves forward. If not, I'm pretty sure Mid-American's going to go ahead and take down that building, whether there's a franchise. I've said it many times, and a lot of those folks around that table have said it, it has nothing to do with the franchise. We've been working on tearing down the Thermacell building for years, and we're going to keep going with that commitment. There's a lot of environmental liability, ownership issues that have just taken forever, and it still is taking forever, but there's nothing whatsoever to do with the Thermacell building removal and the franchise. So if you're totally uncomfortable with that jury statement in there, Micah or someone, we can take that out. If that's the stickling point here for the people in Sheldon, that is something that we can work on. As we've talked about before, we worked with the city and the city staff for about eight months now on this. This agreement has been tweaked. It's a little different than anything else that we've offered out there, so it wasn't created in haste, and I really just want to thank the city and the council for taking the path that they did by securing all the public input that they've had. You guys have had, what, three public meetings? It's been talked about for six, seven months around here about the idea of using the franchise fees to help out with the ambulance, police, and fire extensions expenses. The council and the staff have negotiated agreements that are unique to Sheldon. More specifically, this 15-year agreement is not anything else we offer any of our other towns out there. Again, we haven't had the franchise here for decades. We want to secure it, and if it takes a 15-year agreement rather than a 20 or 25, that's what we want to do. I do want to note that with the council approving the new franchises and taking out the part about franchise fees, there's no way the city can automatically just impose franchise fees if they have a franchise in place. They still have to go back and do public meetings and public hearings, and all of you would be notified about all those kinds of things. So there's just, that's a misnomer to think that they can impose fees without you guys knowing about it. In terms of compensation to Sheldon from Mid-American, what do we get out of this? We get out of this the same thing we've been getting, the revenue that's generated on the electric and gas services. We don't buy franchises. We don't give any other community that we serve special privileges by having new franchises. That's just not what we do business. We stand on our commitment for reliable service, the community involvement we have, and a competitive electric and natural gas rates. In the last 10 years, I've been working on franchises. I know that there's no financial compensation that we've given to any of the 200 cities where I've been working on franchises. But I would note that for Sheldon, Mid-American has and will continue to provide significant financial support. The donation to city projects and community organizations, numbers in the thousands. The relocation costs for moving our facilities also would be in excess of $1 million. We've talked a little bit recently about the widening of 16th Street. That project didn't move forward, but we did have the work looked at and estimated. That would cost the city of Sheldon $200,000 if we moved that and Mid-American chose not to pay for relocation. We're buying the building that houses our local operations over there on the highway, and then again, we're likely spending a half a million or more dollars to clean up that Thermacell building project. Mid-American has stepped up to prove we're a good community partner in business, and we are asking Sheldon to simply formalize the handshake agreement with new franchise agreements. Frankly, I don't think the city has anything to lose with the council's approval tonight on new franchises. The city does have items to gain for the future of service, continued community and financial support, economic development help, no questions asked about relocation work, and a demification for any city cost during a lawsuit situation. It's kind of hard for us to even understand why approving the new franchises has turned into such a controversial situation. The fee portion of the work has been removed, and now the council simply wants to move forward by doing the right thing and more legally and formally honor our commitment to serving Sheldon with utility services. We welcome that partnership. In closing, I do want to read a short statement from Craig Van Meteren, who I believe most of the residents of Sheldon know. He's the operation supervisor here. He was planning to be here tonight to read this in person, but shortly after the Labor Day parade on Monday, he was asked to head to the Carolinas in Florida to help with the restoration work that's going to occur because of Hurricane Dorian. We have about 80 crew members that have been traveling the last couple days, and they are now in place to help put things back together once the hurricane goes by. From Craig, he says, "I am the operation supervisor for Northwest Iowa area, including Sheldon. Sheldon is extra special to me because my family and I live here. I am proud to be a Mid-American employee who calls Sheldon home. I take great pride in the work that Mid-American Energy Company does in Sheldon, from supporting community events and projects to providing reliable natural gas and electric service. We have a tagline at Mid-American that reads, 'Obsessively, relentlessly at your service.' For me personally, I believe my team does just that. I can guarantee that if a lightning storm passes through or there is an ice storm, gas leak, or blizzard, we will be out working to provide you the service that we do daily. I often drive around town jotting down on ways to improve our system. I feel we have made great strides in Sheldon over the past 10-plus years, and we are continuing to replace old cable in order to prevent outages. We are looping our system in for greater reliability. We make additional circuit ties, and we recently added a feeder circuit for future growth in town. As Mid-American, we now want to take the next step to formalize that partnership with the residents of Sheldon and the city on these franchises in order to solidify the commitment that we've had for years." Thank you. I would be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Are there any questions for Mark? Yes, sir. If you could come to the mic or grab a mic so we can get it on, so we can hear you through, when it goes through the recording.
I guess my question is the agreement. So what are the options? You're saying a 15? I thought there was something about five or 10.
A 15-year agreement with real fair language in here, five and 10, which we also don't do with any of the other communities. That's a good point. Thank you.
Any others? Okay, thank you, Mark. Any other comments? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. Support. Roll call, please.
Kent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right, same song, second verse. We will now open the public hearing regarding the Mid-American Electric.
No, you have to do the reading.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Yep. Move it back a minute. Regarding the third reading of the Gas Franchise Ordinance.
Okay, so what are we looking here for?
Stand a motion.
Motion to approve the third reading?
Yes.
I would make that motion to move forward with this.
Support. Discussion.
I think all along, we've negotiated with Mid-American very well. It's been back and forth over the last eight years, or eight months of working on this agreement. I think they've listened to us, we've listened to them. I just think it's a good deal to have a commitment with them.
Okay.
I guess the thing that comes most to mind with me is that 16th Street project could have turned into a huge bill for us. It didn't come to that, but if we had an agreement, it wouldn't even be an issue. That's huge to me. Fred, I also concur with you that if someone has $100,000 to spend somewhere, they can choose to spend it with someone they have a business agreement with or someone they don't have a business agreement with. You can decide in your own mind what you would do. I personally would spend it with somebody I had a business agreement with, and I think that we've probably missed out on extensive things in the last 30 years for no cost. There's no cost savings to not have any franchise agreement. I think it's time.
And yeah, I'll just go and say that I appreciate the work that Mark and his team have done to get us to this point when we are the only city left of their territory that does not have a franchise, and we even have to go so far as to adjust their boilerplate language just to make this happen. Well, it's commendable, and yeah, it's time.
Yeah, I just want to state that I think I can speak for the council that we appreciate the comments of the community, and we appreciate your willingness to get involved and to speak to the concerns that you have. I also am confident that we are all here to serve you in this capacity, and there is no underlying issues going on here regarding the franchise fee as it's been stated or been assumed or conjectured. What I support this because I've spent most of my life in the business world trying to build partnerships, and partnerships is a key thing. to build partnerships, and partnerships is a key thing of learning how to deal and to promote a business. And I think by having this agreement, in fact, I know by having this agreement, that we'll be working from a partnership perspective and instead of a controversial perspective. And because of the outline of the timeframe for this agreement, we have opportunities to do different things later on down the road, not that far down the road, if things aren't going well. But I think it's time that we enter into a partnership with Mid-American and work together hard to do some of the community embolment issues that you've brought up and that we all know that we'd like to see for our community. I'd like to see some relocation going on. But I think the best position for the city to do that is by entering into this partnership. So, thank you.
My thought process is, Mark alluded to it, he called this a handshake agreement. And 30 or 40 years ago, handshake meant something. Nowadays, I don't think it does. You've got to have something in paper, so I think it's time to get an agreement going.
You've all spoken. My comment at this point would be also that Mid-American has been nothing but very professional and courteous throughout this process. Not just the discussion we've had about franchises, but their service to this community for many, many years. They've been a great business, a great partner to have in this community. Impeccable service, strong community supporters. There's no reason not to trust them in this agreement. And to say otherwise is like, why, when we have arguments, we don't need it, sounds to me like, why buy the cow when we can get the milk for free? And I don't, that is not good business practice. I don't want to do business that way. I would not do business that way as a private businessman, and I certainly don't think the city should do it either. And so I too speak highly in favor of approving this franchise with Mid-American. So if there are no more questions, then I will take roll call, roll call, please. We have a motion, correct? Yes.
Brewster.
Aye.
Farahana.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Thank you. Now moving on. We open the public hearing on the electric franchise portion of the agreement with Mid-American. Are there any other comments?
Same thing, Marvin Reason, same thing on electrical. I don't believe they should have a franchise. And by the way, I want to thank you, Mark. I think you did a good job at least explaining a couple of things to me, I probably should have got the council eight years ago. I had not a clue that you've been in contact with the city. We certainly haven't been informed, if they have, I'll tell you that. So you did bring out some good points, sir, I appreciate that. But as far as this deal about widening streets and all this business, I would rather doubt that would happen. And not only that, we don't have enough money to fix the streets we got now. We've got to fix, no, we've got to fix the streets now. Pete, let me finish, we're at a hearing. We're going to fix the streets now before we do any widening. We're broke, can't afford it. And only that, I want a commitment, when is this electrical stuff going to go underground? We were promised it long ago. Mark might have not been, but I heard it time and time again. I'm 60, going to be 68 years old, I've heard it time and time again, it just never happens. We had all these promises, but we never seen it. When is it going to happen? I asked you to reject it, a franchise for electric.
So you think they'd be more likely to do it if we reject it? Is that what you're saying?
They're going to keep, they're going to keep up their stuff. If they're smart, they keep up their equipment and what they have. That's only good business for themselves. If they want to be around here, we can let somebody else come in, okay?
Okay. And the widening thing didn't happen because some things changed and it wasn't necessary. We looked into it at first and thought it might be required, okay, from a federal standpoint. That didn't turn out, thank goodness, because it would have been really expensive had it been required. As it turned out, it wasn't required. So it's not something we wanted to do just for the heck of it. It was something that as we resurfaced, that might have been required of us, that didn't happen, thank goodness. But if we had been required, it would have been really expensive, about $200,000, just to move the utilities.
That's a foreign market road. You should have stated with the county, you wouldn't have had to worry about it.
That's easy to say, but hard to do. It's easy to say, but they don't have to cooperate.
I'd say that the city better watch what they do because we've got plenty of other stuff to fix first. But with that, we do not need an electrical franchise.
Well, I'm just saying.
And by the way, I haven't got that, do I get that question? Are you going to ask Micah that question about this? That's curious, how come he won't answer my question? Are you going to ask him a question to answer the public about this, if he would recommend no jury to his clients?
I'm not.
No, I want a question answered to Micah, give me a legal opinion for the city.
I'm not going to answer the question, ask the question to Micah until I know what you're talking about specifically.
On the franchise about the...
I would like to know.
Right.
How it's worded, before I speak to it.
I want to know, well, I know it's worded, it said that you'd waive a jury trial, that's what it says, if I read it right.
And I think that was addressed at the last meeting, and again today.
And nobody's answered that question. I want the, the city attorney to answer that question. He's not an attorney for the city of Sheldon.
All right, thanks, Marv. I think we've heard enough.
I guess that answers the question. What about eminent domain?
That was also addressed at the last meeting.
I don't believe they should have eminent domain either, that's a big item. We should get something, you guys should have been negotiating something like that.
All right, Scott, Sam, if you want to respond to that, you may.
I think the issue of eminent domain was addressed last time, that either way, they would need approval of the city council, and it's better to have it in the form of a franchise agreement, that you're going to ask for eminent domain, but either way, you would have to have a hearing in the city council before Mid-American could declare eminent domain.
I still think your attorney should have asked, should have asked your, that's why your attorney.
I've explained my position on that.
No, you're not the attorney.
Moving on. Are there any questions or comments at this point? All right, motion to close public hearing. So moved. Support. Roll call, please.
Kent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Farahana.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right. Moving then on into the third reading of the Electric Franchise Ordinance. Make the motion to approve the third reading.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Farahana.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right. Moving then on into the third reading of the Electric Franchise Ordinance. Make the motion to approve the third reading.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Farahana.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right. Moving on to new business. Discussion regarding the Sheldon Community Ambulance Team full-time position. At this point, I don't think there's any reason we need to go into closed session, am I right?
There is not unless there is a desire by the applicant or any of the council members, and I don't believe there's any been, been any such desire expressed, so we can move forward.
Okay. And I will turn it over to you then, Sam.
Thank you, Mayor. The signed offer letter, along with a supplementary email, is in front of you, and then I will, as soon as this is approved, this will also become a public record, and I'll give copies of it to the media present. And it's ready for your approval. I want to thank Diane Woltis and Brad Hint and Kevin Miller for their work on this, spent a lot of time. Kevin, do you have anything to add? Kristen's not here tonight? Okay. Start date is still estimated at September 23, correct? Somewhere in there?
All right. At this point then, I think we're ready to entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve Kristen Hahn.
Support. Any questions or comments from any of the council? Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Farahana.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Motion carries, all right. Just hold on just a second. All right. Moving forward then, let's go into the city manager's report, please. Nothing to report? Okay. Todd, how about you, anything you need to fill us in on?
I'll do it.
All right. Any council comments from the left, my left?
I do want to thank the SCDC, Chanel, and the office, and all the other volunteers that make that weekend a success for Sheldon. If it wasn't for them and the volunteers, and I know she can always use more next year,